A proclamation. Whereas May 17th of 2025 is the 15th Kids to Parks Day organized and launched by the National Park Trust and held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas Kids to Parks Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors, visit local parks, public lands, and waters. And whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hypercholesterolemia. And whereas Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and outdoors. And whereas Kids to Parks Day will recognize the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefit of the outdoors. Now therefore, I Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the 17th day of May 2025 as Kids to Parks Day in San Marcos, Texas. And do hereby call upon all persons of the City of San Marcos to enjoy this day by visiting the parks and public waterways along with kids. And we have a lot of parks and green spaces, don't we?
Thank you, Mayor. As you heard her mention, National Kids to Parks Day is an initiative that was founded by the National Park Trust. It's designed and intended to get kids out in nature and exploring their parks. And as the mayor had also said, we have so many parks, like 32 parks and over 3...
Over 2,600 acres of parks and open space.
2,600 acres of parks and open space. And so lots of opportunities to get out and have those kids connect to nature and get those life experiences that are so often only found by visiting a park. The Parks and Recreation Department celebrates this initiative annually by hosting a party in your park. This year it is at Conway Park, which is 504 Bliss Lane. It's 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. this Friday, May 9th. We'll have refreshments, music, snacks, all kinds of fun. So we hope you'll join us.
Thank you. Thanks for what y'all do for the kids. I'm sorry. Whereas World Migratory Bird Day is an important vehicle to focus attention on over 350 species of birds that migrate between wintering grounds in South and Central America, Mexico, the Caribbean, and the Southern U.S. and their nesting sites in our communities and throughout North America. And whereas of the 615 bird species that have been documented in Texas, over half of them are migratory. And whereas birds play an essential role in maintaining a healthy and resilient environment. And whereas birds in North America and Canada have declined by over 2.9 billion breeding adults since 1970, according to research led by the Cornell Lab of Ornithology. And whereas threats and solutions to bird deaths are largely human-driven, such as habitat concerns, predation by cats, light pollution, window collisions, pesticides, herbicides, and other pollutants. And whereas the theme this year is shared spaces, creating bird-friendly cities and communities, we call on our community to take action, like keeping lights out at night to help the birds. And whereas the City of San Marcos and partners are recognized as a bird city by Audubon and the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department. And whereas the San Marcos Discovery Center is holding their fourth annual Migratory Bird Festival on May 10th, a free family event, family-friendly event to celebrate and learn about birds. Now therefore, I Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the 10th day of May of 2025 as World Migratory Bird Day. And do hereby call upon all persons of the City of San Marcos to recognize the role migratory birds play in the overall health of our environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, right now we have millions of birds. I think 358 million birds a couple of nights ago went over San Marcos. So just keeping those lights out from 11:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. is really helpful to them. It can reduce their deaths by 60%, just that one small action. This Saturday, we have our Migratory Bird Day Festival. We're a bird city this year, so the theme is really relevant to our new bird city designation that we got this year. And we have some partners here with us. We have Rebecca from the Torres Information Center Destination Services, and she's going to say a little bit about a special sticker they created for us and some other art going on that has to do with birds.
Hello, Rebecca E. Barra, Destination Services. And we couldn't thank you enough, Nikki, for taking on the project of submitting all that information to receive the designation of Bird City. So thank you. But one of the things that we did, if you want to grab that, I should have made them larger. We partnered with Renee Perez, who is one of our local artists, and he has just lovely different bird species that he has in art. And we took one of those and we created a Bird City Texas sticker for that, Bird City Texas sticker for that to represent San Marcos. But we also have a Walker's Gallery, the current exhibit. The theme is winging it. So we are truly embracing, Destination Services truly embracing, the whole wings, butterflies, birds, butterflies, bees, bats, all the pollinators in our future campaign. So this is just the start.
And the Walker's Gallery.
Walker... My apologies. Thank you, Mayor. The Walker's Gallery is an exhibit, an art exhibit at our activity center here across the street. So thank you.
And if you want a sticker, come to Migratory Bird Day this Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00 or stop by Destination Services at the Torres Information Center on 35 and Riverside.
Thank you all for what you're doing for the birds. Proclamation. Whereas May 11th through the 17th of 2025 has been designated as Police Week and May 15th of 2025 as Peace Officers Memorial Day by the President of the United States in 1962. And whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the City of San Marcos Police Department. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, there are currently more than 24,000 law enforcement officers in the United States who have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including two members of the City of San Marcos Police Department. And whereas we and the City of San Marcos and the San Marcos Police Department are observing Police Week and National Peace Officers Memorial Day on Wednesday, May 14th, and will have a remembrance ceremony to honor our fallen officers. And whereas our law enforcement agencies play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedom which have been guaranteed by the Constitution to every American citizen. And whereas it is important that people throughout our country, and specifically San Marcos, know and understand the challenges, duties, and responsibilities of our police department and that members of our law enforcement agencies recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And whereas it is fitting improper that we express our gratitude for the dedicated service and courageous deeds of the San Marcos Police Department and for the contributions they have made to the security and well-being of our residents. Now therefore, I Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 11th through 17th of 2025 as National Police Week and May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And do hereby call upon all persons of the City of San Marcos to observe Wednesday, May 14th, 2025, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of our own two peace officers, Officer Kenneth Copeland and Officer Justin Putman, who through their courageous deeds and life of service, lost their lives in the performance of duty. Thank you for continuing this remembrance that we do, and thank you for your service, and thanks for remembering our two fallen.
Thank you, Mayor. So if you do not know, year-to-date for 2025, we've already lost 23 peace officers across the nation. Last year alone, we lost 165 peace officers. Locally, we just celebrated the seventh remembrance of Officer Ken Copeland, and we did the Copeland Challenge, and we did that at Station 5 in collaboration with the Fire Department and Department of Public Safety. We had record attendance. We had 13 teams compete to come out and honor Ken's memory. So I also want to brag quickly on this team that is assembled here. We are fully staffed. I'll say that again. We are fully staffed. We have zero sworn vacancies, which is a testament to this team. People want to work at the San Marcos Police Department. Our professional staff, I'm joined here by Sheila, I got Tammy, they comprise a third of our workforce. I always want to recognize our professional staff. We have about 58 full-time employees who are professional staff. And aside from a couple of telecommunications that Audrey is quickly trying to fill, we are fully staffed on professional. So Team SNPD, my hat's off to you. You're doing a phenomenal job. But let's set aside this week to remember those who have paid it all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and now we'll do photos. Whereas air quality can threaten our environment, economy, and the health of the residents of the Capital Area Council of Governments, CAPCOG, region. And whereas children, older adults, people with lung disease and heart disease are particularly affected by poor air quality, which makes up about half of all residents in central Texas. And whereas in 2024, air quality in the Austin-Round Rock-San Marcos Metropolitan Statistical Area, MSA, was moderate or worse according to the Air Quality Index, AQI, nearly 50% of days. And whereas in 2024, the MSA exceeded the federal eight-hour ozone standard and the annual fine particulate matter standard, which increases the region's risk of being designated non-attainment. And whereas remaining in compliance with the NAAQS is important not only for public health but also for the region's economy and ability to conduct transportation planning. And whereas the goals of the 2019-2026 Austin-Round Rock-San Marcos MSA Regional Air Quality Plan is to maximize probability of compliance with the national ambient air quality standards and minimize health and environmental impacts of air pollution. And whereas the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency has designated May 5th through 9th of 2025 as National Air Quality Awareness Week. And whereas the Capital Area Council of Governments supports the efforts of the Central Texas Clean Air Coalition and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency to promote air quality. Now therefore, I Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5th through 9th of 2025 as Air Quality Awareness Week and do hereby call upon all persons of the City of San Marcos to take action, to be air-aware and educate themselves about local air quality by visiting the City of San Marcos Air Quality webpage at samarcustx.gov-air-quality and by promoting air quality and air quality awareness within our community. Thank y'all for bringing this to our attention and for what you do every day when we're talking about air quality. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you everyone from the City of San Marcos. I appreciate the longstanding effort that the city has contributed towards the region's air quality. Clean air doesn't happen by accident, especially in an area that's growing as quickly as ours. It's through coordination across city and county boundaries that we're able to maintain air quality, which is essential for public health and to boost our economy. And over the last few years, that's gotten more and more difficult as growth has continued, but climate has not allowed for the best suitable conditions for lower air, mainly due to some of the drought conditions making it hotter and drier in our region. That may continue. We don't have control over that, but what we do have control over is our local actions. And so I encourage all to go to airscentraltexas.org. We're running a campaign this week where you can win a gift card or an air quality sensor by pledging to take specific actions that help reduce air pollution. With that, I'll hand it back to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and now we'll do photos.
Okay.
Who's going to be talking? You're in the right place.
Andrea, you asked. We delivered.
A proclamation. Whereas National Bike Month was established in 1956 by the League of American Bicyclists and is a chance to demonstrate the many benefits of cycling. And whereas the City of San Marcos has been designated a bicycle-friendly community through the League of American Bicyclists in recognition of continued progress in bicycle infrastructure, programs, and policies. And whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of San Marcos and its visitors are encouraged to experience the joys of cycling by getting out and going for a ride, and we have 100 miles of bike facilities in San Marcos. And whereas cycling provides a means of sustainable transportation and recreation year-round to attract more visitors to enjoy our local parks and trail systems, as well as cultural and scenic attractions. And whereas city staff annually participates in the National Bike to Work Day on the third Friday in May, and we invite the community to join us in participating, that's on May 16th. And whereas the city partners with local bike shop owners and cycling enthusiasts to promote National Bike Month. And whereas National Bike Month is an opportunity to celebrate the unique power of bicycles for people of all ages and abilities. Now therefore, I Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as National Bike Month and do hereby call upon all persons of the City of San Marcos to explore our community on a bicycle this month and all year round.
Every Bike Month is significant, but this one is especially significant because our city was just designated a bronze bicycle-friendly community. Thank you. And what that tells you is that our city cares about bikes from many angles and approaches growing our system from many angles, whether that's infrastructure, policy, programs. And you can see the team here that contributes to that. You can see police, public works, planning. There are others, many others, who aren't included here. One thing we're very proud of is that some of our officers went out to Bowie Elementary School last week and assisted in hosting a bike rodeo. And because of all of those contributions, that's how we've arrived here, but it's not where we want to stay. We hope to see continued progress. Even the Bicycle Friendly Community Award is not for achievement, it's for progress. So that's what we're trying to keep doing, and we'll do that every month of the year.
Thank you for all you do to contribute to bike enthusiasm and safety for them. Thank you.
Starting the hat, can you go this way just a little bit for me? There you go. Looking this way for me? Ready? One, two, three. Couple more. Two, three. Last one. Two, three. We got it. Thank you.
Bike Day? Okay.
Who's going to be talking? You're in the right place.
Andrea, you asked. We delivered.
A proclamation. Whereas National Bike Month was established in 1956 by the League of American Bicyclists and is a chance to demonstrate the many benefits of cycling. And whereas the City of San Marcos has been designated a bicycle-friendly community through the League of American Bicyclists in recognition of continued progress in bicycle infrastructure, programs, and policies. And whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of San Marcos and its visitors are encouraged to experience the joys of cycling by getting out and going for a ride, and we have 100 miles of bike facilities in San Marcos. And whereas cycling provides a means of sustainable transportation and recreation year-round to attract more visitors to enjoy our local parks and trail systems, as well as cultural and scenic attractions. And whereas city staff annually participates in the National Bike to Work Day on the third Friday in May, and we invite the community to join us in participating, that's on May 16th. And whereas the city partners with local bike shop owners and cycling enthusiasts to promote National Bike Month. And whereas National Bike Month is an opportunity to celebrate the unique power of bicycles for people of all ages and abilities. Now therefore, I Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as National Bike Month and do hereby call upon all persons of the City of San Marcos to explore our community on a bicycle this month and all year round.
Thank you, Mayor. Every Bike Month is significant, but this one is especially significant because our city was just designated a bronze bicycle-friendly community. Thank you. And what that tells you is that our city cares about bikes from many angles and approaches growing our system from many angles, whether that's infrastructure, policy, programs. And you can see the team here that contributes to that. You can see police, public works, planning. There are others, many others, who aren't included here. One thing we're very proud of is that some of our officers went out to Bowie Elementary School last week and assisted in hosting a bike rodeo. And because of all of those contributions, that's how we've arrived here, but it's not where we want to stay. We hope to see continued progress. Even the Bicycle Friendly Community Award is not for achievement, it's for progress. So that's what we're trying to keep doing, and we'll do that every month of the year.
Thank you for all you do to contribute to bike enthusiasm and safety for them. Thank you.
Starting the hat, can you go this way just a little bit for me? There you go. I think I've got everyone. Okay. Looking this way for me? Six miles, ready? One, two, three. Couple more. Two, three. Last one. Two, three. We got it. Thank you.
I guess we should stay from them.
Yeah.
Come on up.
Get ready for the photo.
Couple times.
The more the merrier.
A proclamation. Whereas the Core Four Partnership, City of San Marcos, Hays County, San Marcos CISD, and Texas State University, through the SMTX Mental Health Coalition and its members and partners, recognize that mental health includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being. It affects how we think, feel, and act. It also affects how we handle stress, relate to others, and make choices. And whereas mental health is foundational to our wellness because it allows us to care for ourselves and others and make valuable contributions to our community. And whereas with early and effective interventions, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas a lack of mental health awareness leads to devastating impacts on the well-being of individuals and communities. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the responsibility to learn about mental health and to promote wellness and support prevention efforts. So whereas the Core Four Partnership, SMTX Mental Health Coalition, Community Action Inc. of Central Texas, Project Aware, Youth Task Force, Young Adult Task Force, Communities and Schools of Central Texas, Senate Corps Foundation, San Marcos Housing Authority, Greater San Marcos Youth Council, Hays Caldwell Women's Center, Healthy Hays Coalition, community partners, and care providers collaborate to reduce stigma and to provide education and awareness of prevention, early intervention, and treatment resources for mental health. Now therefore, I Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as National Bike Month and do hereby call upon all persons of the City of San Marcos to explore our community on a bicycle this month and all year round.
Thank you, Mayor. Every Bike Month is significant, but this one is especially significant because our city was just designated a bronze bicycle-friendly community. Thank you. And what that tells you is that our city cares about bikes from many angles and approaches growing our system from many angles, whether that's infrastructure, policy, programs. And you can see the team here that contributes to that. You can see police, public works, planning. There are others, many others, who aren't included here. One thing we're very proud of is that some of our officers went out to Bowie Elementary School last week and assisted in hosting a bike rodeo. And because of all of those contributions, that's how we've arrived here, but it's not where we want to stay. We hope to see continued progress. Even the Bicycle Friendly Community Award is not for achievement, it's for progress. So that's what we're trying to keep doing, and we'll do that every month of the year.
Thank you for all you do to contribute to bike enthusiasm and safety for them. Thank you.
Starting the hat, can you go this way just a little bit for me? There you go. I think I've got everyone. Okay. Looking this way for me? Six miles, ready? One, two, three. Couple more. Two, three. Last one. Two, three. We got it. Thank you.
Yes.
I guess we should stay from them.
Yeah.
I guess we should stay from them.
Yeah.
Come on up.
Get ready for the photo.
Couple times.
The more the merrier.
A proclamation. Whereas the Core Four Partnership, City of San Marcos, Hays County, San Marcos CISD, and Texas State University, through the SMTX Mental Health Coalition and its members and partners, recognize that mental health includes our emotional, psychological, and social well-being. It affects how we think, feel, and act. It also affects how we handle stress, relate to others, and make choices. And whereas mental health is foundational to our wellness because it allows us to care for ourselves and others and make valuable contributions to our community. And whereas with early and effective interventions, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas a lack of mental health awareness leads to devastating impacts on the well-being of individuals and communities. And whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the responsibility to learn about mental health and to promote wellness and support prevention efforts. So whereas the Core Four Partnership, SMTX Mental Health Coalition, Community Action Inc. of Central Texas, Project Aware, Youth Task Force, Young Adult Task Force, Communities and Schools of Central Texas, Senate Corps Foundation, San Marcos Housing Authority, Greater San Marcos Youth Council, Hays Caldwell Women's Center, Healthy Hays Coalition, community partners, and care providers collaborate to reduce stigma and to provide education and awareness of prevention, early intervention, and treatment resources for mental health. Now therefore, I Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month in San Marcos and do hereby call upon the people of San Marcos to support the SMTX Mental Health Coalition, the Youth Task Force, and the Core Four Partnership by supporting efforts to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, the steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health, and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental health conditions. Thank you. This is truly a combined effort, a good partnership. So thank you all and those who are not here for what you're doing.
Thank you, Mayor. We are so appreciative to the City of San Marcos and the Core Four Partnership. It would not be possible to collaborate across the city and key stakeholders in our community. We have a lot of our coalition members here. We've been able to really focus on education and awareness through the Mental Health Coalition. We've trained this year, I want to say approximately 1,400 community members in mental health first aid training. That includes around 700 district employees from the school district. That was a big win for us. We're still continuing with that. We want to make sure when we talk about mental health, it's not as a one-off for a proclamation day, but that we really internalize that and what does that mean on a community level? What does that mean for our partnership? And most importantly, the lens through which we work and we're focused on is our youth and young adults. If we are able to provide our young people with the skills and tools that they need, they can hopefully handle it better as they join our community, right, and become our colleagues when they move on throughout their academic journey. So thank you so much for the support. Thank you to all of our community partners. It wouldn't be possible without you. And then also, we want to extend an invitation to our event tomorrow, Vibrant Visions. We will be hosting a health, community health resource fair. We'll be featuring the film Hope in Haze that was brought to us by the Healthy Hays Coalition. And we'll also have an art exhibit where we'll showcase some youth art around mental health. So thank you so much. That'll be at the Village. You can check our website for the details.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Everybody in the back row, just take some steps towards me. There you go. Okay. Looking this way. One, two, three.
Okay. A proclamation. Whereas across the nation, local, state, and national governments will celebrate the contributions and outstanding performance of all dedicated public employees during the week of May fourth through tenth of two thousand and twenty-five. And whereas we honor and recognize public servants who serve in national, state, and city government, serving in the wide range of roles they play, from military personnel and first responders to teachers, engineers, healthcare professionals, administrators, legal and recreational leaders, to name a few, and emphasize their contributions to community safety, well-being, infrastructure, and education. And whereas in our city, our staff promotes and sustains a superior quality of life in San Marcos, and in partnership with our community, delivers cost-effective services in a personal, responsive, and innovative manner. And whereas the past year alone, by our city staff, saw two hundred and forty-five thousand library visitors circulated over three hundred and fifty thousand items and offered three thousand programs, and issued two thousand five hundred and thirty-six vital records, processed one thousand seven hundred and sixty-three passport applications, handled seven thousand three hundred and ninety-three open records requests, removed over one thousand three hundred and forty-nine instances of graffiti, removed over thirty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-two pounds of illegal dumping, which included four hundred and fifty shopping carts, two hundred and ninety tires, one thousand three hundred and twenty-two bandit signs, and maintained over two hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet of public planted areas, and diverted thirty percent from the landfill through recycling and vegetation diversion, and processed seventeen thousand five hundred personnel transactions, to include all hiring, promotion, terminations, changes in salary, et cetera, handled eighteen thousand eight hundred and fifty municipal court cases. I'm about halfway through. Processed twenty-three thousand and six payroll checks, resolved one thousand six hundred and sixty reports from the SMTX Connect System, and provided transparency and access to government data via our GIS Open Data Portal, which received eighty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine views, averaging two hundred and forty-five per day, and responded over eight thousand six hundred fire department incidents, completed over sixteen thousands of fire EMS hazardous materials rescue and fire officer development trainings, nearly five thousand fire and life safety inspections, over eight hundred fire plan reviews, and twenty-nine fire investigation responses, and repaired seventy-six water mains, one hundred and thirty-four service lines, completed inventory of seventeen thousand six hundred and eighty-two service lines, cleaned eighty thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine point five nine feet of sewer lines, made forty repairers of service lines and ten domains, mailed two thousand five hundred and eighteen compliance letters, visited one thousand one hundred and twenty-seven commercial properties, and GPS backflow assemblies. Currently, we're tracking ten thousand two hundred and forty-eight samples, assemblies, conducted twenty-four industrial user treatment inspections, pre-treatment inspections, collected over nine thousand drinking water samples, and four thousand plus wastewater samples for compliance, saved three hundred and forty-five million nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand and seven gallons of water, resulting in one point nine million dollars in savings, completed two hundred and forty-four design projects, installed twelve point six miles of lines, two hundred and eighteen poles, updated six hundred and fifty-six transformers, and finished over two thousand nine hundred maintenance work orders using five thousand three hundred plus labor hours, achieving a three hundred, I'm sorry, thirty percent reduction in manual reads, and answered one hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and nine calls to the dispatch center, received fifty-four thousand six hundred and forty police calls for service, issued approximately five thousand four hundred permits, and conducted over thirty thousand building inspections, and maintained twenty downtown city blocks, removed seven hundred and thirty-two stickers, and spent four thousand hours picking up litter. Whereas without these public servants at every level committed to service to the public and provided the foundation for continuity in our democracy, which regularly changes its leaders and elected officials, now therefore, I, Jane Houston, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of San Marcos, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of May fourth through tenth of two thousand and twenty-five as Public Service Recognition Week, and do hereby call upon all persons of the City of San Marcos to recognize the accomplishments, contributions, and outstanding performance of dedicated government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, public schools, and city. In testimony hereof, I affirm and to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of San Marcos, Texas, this sixth day of May of two thousand and twenty-five. Thank y'all. And it was small font. Anyway, and I know there's a lot more that didn't get turned into us. So anyway, thank you. This is very impressive. We are a growing city. We've got a growing staff, and we have such a dedicated staff. I appreciate each and every one of you.
Not much more to add, other than thank you for showing up. We've got to think about that. Public service is way different than it used to be, and a lot of times, you may not hear when you're doing a great job. Sometimes you really hear when things aren't working well. So I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you for day in, day out, making sure things do work, and that people are able to get their streets paved, have their lights turn on, call when somebody asks for police service to show up, library, that becomes such a hub for so many people, not just checking out books, and I understand that. HR, you help to support us to make sure we have the tools and resources. So thank you. Internal Services, IT, that we have all of the resources we need to do our jobs. So very much appreciate Planning for helping us plan, and Electric for making sure, again, lights turn on and all of that. So really appreciate y'all all very, very much, and thank you for what you do every day.
This side is the squeeze down. The three that just were added is the squeeze down. All right, here we go. Everybody ready? Six miles. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Last one, two, and three.